Ms. Bunch, you may want to start the sharing of your intro screen.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. It is 5:30. It is February 12th, and I will call this meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for agreeing to meet on a Friday evening. I know this is not an ideal meeting time for anyone. Do I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
No move.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Atherton and a second from Ms. Howser. I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Steven, Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Howser?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just going to remind everyone to please try to stay muted when you're not speaking so we can cut back on feedback. And the first item on our agenda is proposed Plan B schedule for grades 2 to 12. Good evening, Dr. Felder.
Why, good evening, Chair McKenzie, Vice Chair Stevens, all of our board members, staff, students who may be tuned in, and families. Tonight, we have two important outcomes for this special called meeting. Next slide, please. But first, we want to acknowledge that today, February 12th, is the Lunar New Year. Per the lunar calendars, traditional in many Asian countries, including China, Vietnam, and South Korea. In this holiday of new beginnings, 2021 is the year of the metal ox. The ox represents hard work, positivity, and honesty. So happy Lunar New Year to all who are celebrating. Next slide, please. And so let's review our outcomes for tonight's meeting. Again, there are two. The first outcome is, by the end of this meeting, board members will have reviewed, proposed, revised, staggered, return to school schedules for grades 2 to 12, students who are opting for Plan B hybrid. The second outcome is that by the end of this meeting, the board would have received information on student achievement data and heard about strategies currently underway and propose for mitigating learning gaps. Any questions about tonight's outcomes? All right, so I do want to provide a little context, and so with regards to this staggered return plans. And so let me just state that these proposed staggered schedules were developed for our grades 2 to 12 students opting for Plan B, which is currently slated to begin on April 6th, which is the fourth quarter. These students are currently in Plan C, all remote. These schedules were developed in collaboration with all of our principals. In fact, principal representatives from each tier are here tonight to walk the board through their tiers' suggested reopening schedule to include the rationale and any challenges they foresee that they will need to be worked through. The proposed plans reflect the fact that if we wait for the impending legislation, also known as SB 37, we may not have time to stagger students in. It would be everyone at once, which we want to avoid from a safety standpoint. Plans include orientation days to allow students and staff time to practice their full-day routines, to include participating and acclimating to things such as their detailed safety plans, the three Ws in their learning environment, teaching and learning, meal protocols, et cetera. And there are common themes across all of the tiers' staggered return plans. So for example, there are approximately two weeks of orientation, beginning February 22nd at the elementary and middle school tiers and February 24th at the high school tier. And March 8th would be the beginning of the first day for all Cohort A students, which represents only half of the students in each grade who would be returning. Cohort B would begin on March 15th across all tiers. These plans were deemed fine by the ABC Science Collaborative as they reflect the district's continued gradual reopening approach, and it doesn't have students going from Plan C to Plan A. I would also want to mention that board action is needed to adopt the proposed revised plans. So before our principals walk the board through their tiers' plans, we want to provide some additional context regarding the number of students opting for Plan B and a reminder of the data shared previously, of their demographic breakdown based on race. To do that is Dr. Kathleen Dawson, our Deputy Superintendent. Dr. Dawson.
Thank you, Dr. Felder. Good evening, Chair McKenzie, Vice Chair Stevens, board members, and all guests. Happy Lunar New Year. If we could go to the next slide, what we are bringing back to you is the demographic information that we have as of December 2020. And this was based on our families signing up for Plan B. They initially signed up, December 11th was the deadline, and then December 30th was the final calculation. So again, these numbers will have changed slightly, but not very much. So this is pretty close to the representation of our families that will be returning in Plan B. And then in the next slide, you'll see, these are the current numbers that we're planning for student return. Elementary, you'll see that we have a total of, in Cohort A, 920 students returning, and Cohort B, 856 of all seven elementary schools. But you'll see the percentage of the student enrollment that will be returning, and then how the numbers become much smaller as they break down to the cohorts. And again, this is going to allow for the smaller classrooms to allow for the social distancing. And then you'll see that at middle school. And then you'll see that at the high school, and you'll note that at Partnership Academy, because of the low number of students, there is no need for the cohorts. Okay, I just wanted to give you a moment to have a chance to look at those numbers. And as you can see, it's, you know, right around 50 to 70, a couple of schools with a little bit higher, but allowing for enough social distancing for students as the numbers are currently. So to share with us the staggered revised orientation return schedule, I am happy to introduce you, to you, Ms. Amber Wilson, our elementary principal at New Hope Elementary, and she will walk us through the elementary tiers revised proposed plan for hybrid schedule. Ms. Wilson?
Good evening. Can you all hear me?
We sure can. Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Yes, I'm happy to be here with you all this evening, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. So the elementary school proposed plan for hybrid return of students is building upon the success that we've already experienced with our self-contained EC students, our pre-K students, kindergarten and first-grade students, as well as the small groups that we already have back on our campuses. Our students have done remarkably well, learning the protocols for walking in the hallway, washing their hands, playing with masks, on wearing their masks all day. We have been amazed at how well the students have done, and we appreciate all of the work that families put in ahead of that so that we could be successful when they came to school with the stamina to wear their masks and practice those skills as well. So you'll see that we are proposing two days of orientation for each grade level. That is the same kind of process that we used for kindergarten that was very successful. It gave the students ample opportunity to practice the skills, connect with their learning community that they've been working with virtually, but it is different to be in the classroom with them and continue to build on that community that we pull from so much in the elementary school classroom for learning opportunities as well. So we have second and third grade students in Cohort A returning on Monday and Tuesday of the week of February 22nd. And then fourth and fifth grade students would come in on Wednesday and Thursday of that week. Students that are at home in Cohort B or students that are 100% remote would be working asynchronously, aside from the time from 8:00 to 9:00 in the morning when they would have an opportunity for face-to-face time with their teacher in small group instruction, as well as the time that their classes and specials. So specials would continue to be offered to them live by their teacher, as they have every other day. Friday would be an asynchronous day. Most of our students, most of our schools all have kind of a morning meeting to get the day started with their teacher. Some students are assigned into small groups, whether that be for intervention or extension, and then they work asynchronously for the remainder of the day on assignments that teachers have given them for practice. The following week, we would follow the same schedule of Monday and Tuesday for our second and third grade students, and our fourth and fifth grade students would come on that Wednesday and Thursday, and the same schedule for Friday. And then finally, we're excited to say that March 8th, we would have all of our friends back that are in Cohort A. So we would be open for all of our students in Cohort A, and then the following week of March 15th, we would have all of our students for Cohort B. So yeah, that's kind of an overview. Are there any questions about the elementary plan that I can answer?
Ms. Smiley?
Thanks for your work on this, Ms. Wilson. My only question is about the asynchronous piece. So the students who are not there, who would be working asynchronously, is that, that's just during this orientation period, right? Not during the rest of, sort of, once we get into hybrid?
Yes, ma'am. It would only be for the two days. So the first two days that the students are in the classroom, they would have the full attention of their teacher. But beginning the week of March 8th, all students would be working live with their teacher, whether they were face-to-face in the classroom or zooming into instruction on the schedule that was deemed appropriate for that grade level in that classroom.
And then so the, the, when the students are working asynchronously on these other days, are the teachers doing other sort of preparations and things like that to get ready? What is that creating, carving out some space for teachers?
The teachers still have time to, like, set up their classrooms. I'm assuming that's what you're referring to? And like, okay, yes, perfect. So the teachers would have time in the afternoons or in the mornings, but there's not a lot of time in the day because they do have so many groups that they're seeing. So the students would begin arriving on campus at 9:00, and teachers would be working with their students that are remote from 8:00 to 9:00. So really, the time that they'll have to set up their classrooms would be in the afternoon, and then on Friday afternoon. And that's part of the reason that we will be asking staff to return next week. Different teachers have different needs that they have in terms of setting up their classrooms. Some teachers have been back in the rooms, and their rooms are ready to go. Some teachers have not been back in the rooms, and so they have, you know, more things that they're going to have to do to prepare. And so we do want to provide teachers next week to, you know, kind of get to that space and get prepared for that so that we're ready for orientation. But we'd also want to not lose more instructional days with our students.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Mr. Atherton?
Um, the one question I have was, the TAs were kind of all pushed down to the all-hands-on-deck. What will happen during this time with the TAs? And then once we're back on March 8th, what will that look like in the sense of how TAs are going to be utilized?
Yes, so, Mr. Atherton, we, we have prioritized our TAs currently working in K1. But I think principals all year, every year, whether it's this year or another year, are constantly kind of monitoring the situation of where are the needs of our building, where are the needs of our students, and we fluctuate our staff to fill those gaps. So we will continue to do that as building leaders and ensure that, you know, we have the supports in place for students to be the most successful.
Okay, so it, it'll, it'll vary then at that point, depending on which grade needs, needs support.
I think that would be a better blanket answer. You know, I can answer for New Hope in terms of like what our plans are, if you want, but I, I would be hesitant to answer a blanket answer for the whole group of elementary school principals because that's not something that we've engaged with. You know, as a collective group, that's more something that we handle building by building. As our, our buildings do look different, the needs for our students are different.
And if I, if I may, great question, Mr. Atherton. This is something that Cabinet is discussing and likely bring a request or proposal to the Budget Committee, followed by the full board, with regards to additional support for our schools.
Makes sense. Thank you all.
Ms. Howser?
I'm really, thank you for that answer. I just was wondering if, because they're going to be teaching while they're getting ready for the in-school cohort. So just curious how their workday is going to be and what impact is it going to have on that?
I think in reality, the teachers are going to, you know, balance the needs of their students in the groups that they have. I think you'll see teachers at moments when they don't have students live in front of them, where students are working independently after they've provided, you know, specific instruction, and kids are then putting that into practice. I think they'll maximize the time that they have. Next week, I, I think you'll see teachers putting in probably some extra hours next week after school to get their rooms ready, just as they do every other school year. But we as building leaders will be sensitive to kind of what they need and where they are, and will make sure that they understand that they have some flexibility. If they have more projects that they need to do in their classroom, be flexible in what they plan for their students so that they have the most time that they need while balancing their mental health as well.
Other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Atherton?
I, I do have one other, as I had a few calls today. One of the teachers, you know, mentioned it would be very valuable if the K1 teachers put together some of the lessons learned they had or ideas, you know, not all of them would apply, but just some of the things that they had learned as they, they went into this different learning model, especially with the teachers that have, you know, the hybrid plus the virtual. And I think, I think that advice would be, would go a long way if, if there was a, you know, one sheet, a paper that had some advice or guidance, because I know it's a huge change.
I'll just. Our EC teachers and pre-K teachers and small group instructors probably could contribute some advice also.
Yep, that's a great point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Thanks for being here.
Of course, anytime.
All right, well, our next principal presenting will be Dr. Jeffrey Rockland, Principal at CW Stanford, and he is representing the middle school tier. So Dr. Rockland.
Good evening, Board Superintendent. Thank you so much for letting me come out this evening to speak with you folks. Really appreciate you taking the time to help guide our, our students and our schools forward. In terms of the timeline, very similar to what Amber had just spoken of, in terms of the two-week turnaround with cohort models. For the middle school levels, what we're looking for is sixth grade coming on the first day, sixth and seventh coming on the second day of Cohort A, and then six through eight coming the third day. The reason why we did that was it allows the grade level, pretty much one day at a time, to come into the building and then increases the buses at the same time, so that the bus can see, here's sixth grade. And now when I add in seventh, so that it, really even in a transportation sense, any changes that need to be made can also be gradual, because it's going to be a change for them as well. And so then we follow the same model again when we go to the second week for Cohort B. For each of the grade levels, the first day that they come into school will be similar to what Amber had spoken about in terms of checking in with your Core One class, getting instructions for the day, and being asynchronous for those students that are at home. So if I were to say February 22nd, those students that are remote or in Cohort B, after check-in and making sure they're all set, they would be asynchronous for the rest of the day so that we could focus on the students that are in the building. This would also, as we were talking through today, this might help as well with laptop distribution for those students, practicing all of the routines in the building, and allowing that to occur. Then seventh grade on Tuesday would be similar model with the asynchronous. Wednesday, same thing, the asynchronous model, so that you could focus in for that grade level. But the other benefit is, is that the grade level that we feel needs the most support is basically in for the full week, getting that orientation. Our sixth graders have not been in our building yet. We, we've sent videos. We've tried to virtually walk them through, but it, coming into the building for the first time is going to be something new. So having four days with them, we felt was really important to make that not only four days, but four concurrent days, so that they were getting the most repetition and developed routines possible. And then, of course, doing the asynchronous Fridays as normally scheduled. And then basically, because we've done that week and had it building each week, when you come around to March 8th, then Cohort A is ready to go, and we're ready for, for everybody being in, and routines have been established. So are there questions or concerns that you would have at a middle school level?
Sorry, Ms. Doyle, my, my computer was malfunctioning. I'm good now.
Okay, I have two questions, and this one might have been answered. I'm just trying to remember. Is the length of time, I'll just say my two questions real quick. One is the length of time of an orientation day, is that the same as a regular school day? Okay, and then there also is a question about, what is our policy right now as we move into hybrid of teachers such as EC teachers and AIG teachers coming into classrooms and co-teaching? Is that anticipated, or are we somehow keeping additional teachers out of classrooms so that there, you know, fewer adults in the room or something?
Definitely, one of the things that we, we started through with our EC that we would definitely continue is we have sign-in sheets at every door that we would want to have, so anybody new coming into the classroom, that could occur. I think some of it's going to be learning how to, how to figure this and navigate this. So co-teaching could be effective where, yes, it might be that you need to be in the room, but it also could be that they're in two different rooms and co-teaching at the same time, where those kids that are home and remote could be working with one teacher when they break out. The other ones could be in the room, because you're, you're talking maybe 10 kids at the room at a time to have two adults in that one room. Let's space it out, and, and both in a virtual world and in person, try and maximize our, our success in, in meeting individual kids' needs. So I think it'll be the kind of thing that we're going to learn very quickly. We'll learn what works, what doesn't, and try and maximize those opportunities. But for all of them, yes, we do co-teaching for ESL teachers, for EC, for AIG. That occurs on a regular basis now, and we would expect that to occur at all middle schools, all middle schools equally.
And if I could jump in for just a moment, Mr. Rockland.
Of course.
Our speech-language pathologists, our occupational therapists, we've, we've had practice with folks going into the room in our EC separate classes since October, and again, it's that process. So signing in, in a notebook in the classroom to protect the confidentiality, so not hanging on the doors, and then hand sanitizing and signing back out. So we are, we are making sure that that process is in place. And then also, our staff members that go in are masked, they're keeping the social distance, and so that co-teaching can still work. And then, like Mr. Rockland said, also pulling students to a different room, but still co-teaching that group. So again, being creative, thinking through how to best meet children's needs and still uphold the least restrictive environment for our students with disabilities, and then being able to serve our students with, for English language learners in that same fashion.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Thank you so much, Ms. Kermans and Dr. Rockland.
Yes, thank you both. Thank you, Dr. Rockland, Principal of AL Standback. All right, so next up, we have three principals, three high school principals are here, and they are going to share with you the high school revised proposed Plan B hybrid schedule for their tier. And so joining us is Mr. Stan Farrington, Principal of Partnership Academy, Dr. Ramirez, Carlos Ramirez, Principal of Cedar Ridge High School, and last but not least, Mr. Matthew Hunt, Principal of Orange High School.
All right, good evening, everybody. This is, this is Matt. All of us will be speaking at some point tonight, but I'm going to quickly go over our, our orientation schedule, and thank you for having us. We, we have a different type of week that first week, because all of our 11th graders may take the ACT on that Tuesday. You know, we could potentially, for instance, at Orange High, have up to 300 students taking the test in the building, and so opted not to have an orientation day while that was taking place. So we were going to get go, we'll get going on Wednesday, February 24th. Similar to what Mr. Rockland said, we wanted to, to focus on our ninth grades, find a way to ensure that they get into the building multiple times prior to the March 8th date. So our ninth grade Cohort A will begin on February 24th, and the ninth grade Cohort B on that Thursday. The following week, we have our ninth and 11th graders coming in on Monday and Tuesday. We split the courses, the, the grades up that way because we wanted to minimize the number of students in each class in that first week and transition slowly. So for instance, a lot of our 11th graders may take classes with 12th graders. We wanted, again, minimize the number of people as we work out transportation, as we work out lunch, as we work out hallway transitions. We thought this would be the best way to, to divide up the grade levels. And again, 10th and 12th grade would start on, on March 3rd and March 4th.
Ms. Smiley?
That seems also like a well-considered plan. My question is, how are you going to practice the hall, like, how are you going to make the hallway transitions work? That's been.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure. I think, well, first of all, I'll say, we, we feel great. We have a ton of confidence in our students. We had test, you know, with EOC testing. I think that prepared us really well. There were some days where we had more than 200 students in the building, which is going to replicate this process here. So for instance, at Orange High, we'll have about 100 students on the ninth grade days, about a two, about 200 students on the other days that week of March 4th. So we're going to replicate the processes we use for testing, and our students did a phenomenal job when they came in for, for those EOC days. So a lot of it is, you know, education ahead of time, so either through phone messages or videos and that sort of thing, but then having a lot of staff in, we, we want it to be celebratory, too. First, I want to say to the ninth graders, you know, we can't wait to see you. And we, we, we want it to be a really exciting day, a welcoming day. We want them to actually feel like there are too many adults saying hi to them and, and good morning and, and welcome to Orange High, and, and I know that other of my colleagues feel the same way. So we'll, we'll do it in a variety of ways before they get into the building, but then have a ton of adults in the hallways greeting them and informing them how to get to their first class. Once they're in their first class, then part of that class period will be about, what is, what does restroom usage look like? What does hallway transition look like? You know, what does lunch look like? And, and so the core, the classes themselves will have an orientation component to them as well.
I may tag team with that.
Thank you.
We were able to have small group instruction, and we had a variety of classes operating and really the whole building used at one point or another. And we were able to reflect after our first day, we were able to reflect and, and evaluate what worked and what didn't, and we were able to make adjustments. After the second day, everything was smooth as silk, and we adapted. I'm very confident our staff and our students are, are going to follow our, our safety plan. And we're ready. Like Matt said, we're excited to see them.
Mr. Atherton?
So I have a few questions. So February 23rd, although it says 11th grade, it does include seniors, doesn't it? Because they didn't take it last year because it was canceled. Because they didn't take it last year because it was canceled. So it's eleventh and twelfth.
This administration, I can't speak to the other administrations this year, Mr. Atherton, but this administration is going to be the 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 one that's provided to all eleventh graders. That's where they're where they're enrolled or excuse me, they're all eligible, they're all signed up automatically. It's the free administration. I can get more details to you about the makeup days and other administrations for the other grade levels.
Yeah, well, I'll I'll tell you that I've already received an email as a senior parent that says it's on the twenty third. So I'm I'm hoping that.
I can. I can address some of that. I do know that some of the seniors are scheduled to take the ACT at this point. Probably not a large majority of them right now, but they will be taking it in the future. We will be addressing all of the seniors throughout the year.
Right, because it's required. This isn't the seniors wanting to take it at this point. This is required as a state requirement. All right, so just a few questions I have. Do we know how we're going to manage monitoring the bathrooms? I know that the the teachers will be in the classrooms cleaning and, you know, getting the desk ready. And the students will be in the halls and then in between classes if a student needs to go to the bathroom. And I know the bathrooms have been reduced, but there's not a way for teachers to know how many people are going, right? Have we thought through that on how that would be managed?
Yeah, of of course, we have. I mean, there there will be in terms of the hallway transitions. And again, I don't want to speak for all schools. Yet we we, there are going to be certain times where for the hallway transitions where we may not allow for bathroom usage during certain hallway transitions. Again, we, this is something that is is still a work in progress with the number of students that we have on various hallways. I I know that we we want to have our staff, we'll have more people out in hallways between classes than we normally would. And in terms of the sign in sign out, I can tell you just from an Orange High perspective, the sign in sign out procedures, we are still working on that.
Yeah, I I was more thinking during the non-transition times that someone just has to go. And, you know, with three hundred students, you know, three hundred and fifty-ish on each cohort, you're going to have students that they just have to go. So I I and I know I'm not trying to nitpick, I just know there's so many things that we have to think through and figure out and things we hadn't even figured out. But that's one that's that that came to my mind when I was talking to a teacher that was, you know, concerned that they had classes back to back for the first three periods. And given they had to clean the desk, they wouldn't have an opportunity to to even leave their classroom. So I hope that we have a way that we can figure out to give these teachers that have back to back to back some way to take a break and, you know, go to the bathroom or whatever in between. Because I know there's so much they need to do in transition of the classrooms. The the other question I'll ask and then I'll let others ask is students that are driving, are they just going to park in the parking lot wherever is available? And then there'll be a different screening for them versus the drop off? Or is everybody going to be requested to go to the front of the building or multiple entry points into buildings?
Sure. And again, I can only speak for our school, but I I can tell you that it will it will mirror that of our testing. So we had multiple stations, a station in the front of the building, a station for bus riders and a station for car riders. Anybody who walks to the building and that's a that's a very small number would check in in the front of the building. Students who drive will will have a similar process to that of those who are in the front of the building where they won't. They won't get out of their car until their temperature is taken and they go through the attestation process, just like the students who are in the front of the building.
Okay. Is that similar for Cedar Ridge? Yeah. Okay, thank you all.
Other board members? Looks like that's it, unless, Mr. Atherton, you had other questions. It sounded like you might.
I I just had one other question. I know, I know in the early parts, there were stairwells that were only up and stairwells that were only down. Is that is that still true?
That's that's true at Orange High. I can't speak red in this in terms of the space that we have. There's there, a lot of our stairwells are so narrow to the point where we have to use that approach.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Dr. Ramirez, Mr. Hunt and Mr. Farrington. We are grateful for you being here.
Chair McKenzie, I I think there's a concern that I think we would like to share. And that that concern is really regarding the the high school lunch situation. Now, I I certainly don't have a big an issue with it as the other two high schools do. Because my numbers are much smaller, but with two hundred, oh, well, about a three hundred student cohort, eating outside has become a a bit of a challenge. And 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 how we would do that safely is is a concern that we're still working through. And so if if you give us a moment, I think I think Mr. Ramirez would like to share a little bit. And then I'd like to come back and share another concern also.
We would definitely want to engage with all of your concerns. So absolutely. Take it away, Dr. Ramirez.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Farrington, and good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. I apologize if my dog makes noise. So we have looked at, you know, safety is our number one concern, but it always is in any circumstance. So we have been looking at the possibility of having lunch outside. And so we explored our the different of different possibilities. And we realized that eating lunch outside presents multiple logistical and safety challenges with the current lunch protocols that that we have established. High schools are a little different because we have lunch at the same time or one lunch period. Unlike elementary schools, you can create a cluster and the teachers can eat when they eat and take their kids with them. For us, it's, you know, we have two hundred and eighty something and Matt has over three hundred or Orange High has over three hundred students that will be eating in the bill, well, they'll be eating. So imagine taking all the three hundred students outside, which we we looked at doing. And we don't have a places for them to sit or eat, sit and eat. That basically have to stand in multiple locations. And that presents some supervision challenges. We want to make sure our students are safe. We, and what I'll boil down to is that we have space limitations. Orange will have three hundred and eighty students, we'll have two hundred and ninety eight. In climate weather, they're going to have to eat indoors. If we adjust our schedule, which is the possibility to make to make eating outside work, it will have an impact on our instructional day. Right now, we're at fifty five minute classes. Compare Plan B rollout fifty five versus what we had pre-COVID. Our teachers only have fifty five percent of the time to cover the same curriculum. And our and we're expected to master, our students to master it because of the state assessment. So those are are some huge challenges. And then, because everyone will be outside, we have to update our active shooter protocol. Because when you look at the vulnerability that we have by having our students exposed with the regular time, that that presents some significant challenges for us.
Yeah. If I don't, if you don't mind, I'd like to jump in right here and and share that, you know, when looking at COVID, well, looking at the lunch through a COVID lens, eating outside is definitely the safest idea. However, when you think about it, this Valentine's weekend, you know, millions of people are going to be eating inside of restaurants. And probably most of us will be eating inside. And I just, I I wonder why are these people not being required to eat outside? I was really thinking about that. And and I I'd like to to look at it not only through a COVID lens for safety, but also the lens that he just mentioned, active shooter. We have to consider that component as principles. And if we, if we take off that COVID nineteen lens and look at that, look through that active shooter lens, how safe is a three hundred plus mass gathering of students and staff outside? And, you know, we hate to mention such horrors, but these are things that we have to look at. How safe is that? And therefore, we'd have to completely revamp the the active shooter protocols. We're we're right now, as it stands, we're asking our families to support us and asking our students to go outside in fairly cold weather, not extreme, but cold. And then we're asking them to, you know, restrict conversation, to refrain from any type of interaction, to remain standing or sit on the ground and keep an eye out for anyone who might possibly have a weapon and then eat in under fifteen minutes. So that's a big ask, ASK, ASK. It's a big ask. And so that that is a concern that we have to share. And I'm wondering, you know, it's it's a concern that all Orange County schools has to kind of work to try and address.
Thank you, Mr. Farrington. If I can add another layer. What we are recommending or suggesting is that we have a little more time to revisit the protocol on how we how we can do this safely. If we're going to require students to eat outside, we would like to have a comprehensive review from the Orange County Sheriff's Office and the other experts to to provide recommendations on how we can do this. If I can share a picture with you, what what I mean by space? Is it okay if I share a picture that I took this morning from my campus and from a football field?
Do you have the ability to share, to share?
I I believe Todd might have that ability to share with us.
Can you make Dr. Ramirez able to share from his screen?
I did. What what are you going to share, Carlos?
Could you share the photograph, just the photograph?
You you now have the ability, so you can go to your share function at the bottom of your of your WebEx screen.
Okay. Let me find my my presentation, so give me a second. Okay, I'm sorry, y'all, I'm not used to using this this little WebEx program, so. There it is. Okay. So the first, these are, by the way, our talking points, high school principals love their to do their homework. Okay, so this is Cedar Ridge High School. And you will see, I took this picture this morning with some of my office staff, and we have everyone six feet apart. And this is eight people. So we were thinking this could be an outdoor area where where we can have kids eat outside. But look, just with eight people, we take already a third of this space. So that's one concern. And then we thought, well, what if we use our our stadium field? This is not our stadium field. These aren't, this is a picture I found off the internet. Yeah, well, what if we bring our students out out here to do this, to eat out here? And we can possibly, this is about a hundred students, they're not all socially distant, we can fit some students out there. Maybe we can fit all of them. Challenges, though, is time. How much time will it take for us to exit our building and to walk all the way to the stadium field? Have them eat fifteen minutes and then come back. Then the second thing is is who will supervise? And in order to, logistically to do this, we would have to have nearly every single staff member supervise. So when are the staff members going to have their lunch? I don't know, Matt, if you want to jump, my Mr. Matt, if you want to jump in to share your perspective?
Sure, I think I think you you guys addressed them. I I think the the one thing that we talked about is just in terms of the time and our instructional schedule. You know, with it, we're at the elementary level, lunches can be can be, you know, can be moved over at maybe a three, three and a half hour period, you know, by grade level. Or in the high school, we have to limit it to one class period because students switch classes. And so typically, what we could do is have, you know, we could have one lunch for a group of students at the beginning of second period, which would be about two hundred students, and then have a lunch for students at the at the back half of second period, which would be another two hundred students. So that, so we're we're trying to figure out ways to accommodate, you know, approximately two hundred students during during lunch times if we did have two times during that period.
If I would add one last thing to it, just just a quick note. And that is to look at it through an equity lens almost, because no other school has cohorts that are half the size of Orange High and Cedar Ridge. In in our district, anyway, they aren't even half the size of their cohort. So with that being said, maybe, just maybe, this different size deserves to be possibly addressed a little bit differently. Because it it is going to be a challenge with the numbers and the spacing.
So, yeah, so let me just jump in here and and say thank you to our high school principals for sharing your schedules and and challenges. We certainly want to hear about those. And I would recommend that we continue to discuss the lunch concern and perhaps come back to that. I, board members, of course, if you have questions, by all means, pose those. But for the purpose of this meeting, I would suggest that we, because I know that you're continuing to to look at it. We are reaching out to other districts who have been back in Plan B or and and or A since August that have high schools and and kids eating. But we do know, and I appreciate you acknowledging that, Mr. Farrington, that outdoors is the safest. And we know that we have a system that allows for students to eat indoors, classrooms followed by large spaces if outdoor conditions are not conducive. We also know that we are in the process of purchasing. So if you, you know, again, with the seating situation, picnic tables and stadium seats, et cetera. But even then, what I'm hearing and understanding is that it's the sheer number of students that poses the biggest concern. And so I would like to recommend that we do some more digging. I like the idea of having a conversation with the sheriff's office and coming back to this matter of lunch at this high school level and bringing that back to the board.
Ms. Smiley? I just want to thank all of our principals for raising their concerns around this. And the logistics are a legitimate thing we should be figuring out, right? And I mean, it sounds, when I hear you describe this and think about, you know, three hundred and eighty or two hundred and eighty, however many high school students expected to sort of manage themselves in a single group outdoors, I do question whether that is even a safer move. I mean, safe, safe, it's the safest outside. And I think as these new more contagious variants are rising, that we have even potentially more risk. Whenever we take off our masks indoors, I think it it could become a riskier situation, sort of the further down you get with these variants. But to me, the issue of the single period and then everybody outside or even half of that seems, and then the the questions around shooter drill, that seems super relevant. And I think we should adjust how we're thinking about doing this. What, what, I guess, what was the plan before this? So so was the plan for students to pot up and and eat in the jewel rooms or all go to the cafeteria? Or what was the plan prior to this?
Ms. Smiley, Dr. Fowler and team connected us with some other high schools that started their their Plan B in September. And so we spoke with those schools and they allowed students to eat indoor, in the cafeteria, in the classrooms and different spaces. They used their internal spaces. We don't know the logistics as far as their square footage and the ability to do that. But the principals reported that it, the kids were great, they followed the expectations, the three Ws. And those that did not were. And those that did not were, were immediately placed on, um, 100% remote. They weren't allowed back. And we heard that from teachers, too, when we spoke with teachers. So that's, that's what we were thinking, uh, as we started planning this.
Thank you.
Other board members? Um, I also want to echo Ms. Smiley's thanks to our principals. And I always appreciate, um, when concerns are shared directly with us. Um, I think that we're all willing to consider how we move forward. I do, I mean, I just have to speak from my heart here that, you know, when we start talking about active shooter drills and things like that, this, this virus is also a matter of life and death. So I just, I, I want to see us exhaust our options. And, you know, if there's opportunities for some students to eat outside, um, especially what we know about, um, older kids, older students being, um, maybe more likely to transmit the disease. I just, um, I'd like to see us do, do what we can. But I certainly am going to keep an open mind and appreciate all the work that's being done and, um, appreciate Dr. Felder's suggestion that maybe we, um, review options at the next board meeting. Is that what you were thinking, Dr. Felder?
Yes.
Is that in time to, for this? I guess that's my question.
Our meeting is on the 22nd, and it looks like the 23rd is the ACT day. So, I mean, if...
I have a, just... You know, the, the schools, I mean, first of all, I just want to thank Dr. Felder, the principals, the teacher, you know, all the work that's gone in to create this new schedule so quickly. Um, and we have, uh, legislation coming that's going to, you know, we're ahead of it now. I like being ahead of what's going to happen in the world. My question is, and I'm really appreciative of the principals of Dr. Felder raising these issues. And so it makes me even more confident that they've got this. And so I just am not, um, clear, uh, what we except be aware of what the schools are going to do. But what do we, what does the district need from us in terms of the decision about the schedule, about the decision on lunch? What does the district need from us to move forward with these pretty well-done plans?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Hauser. If I may, uh, so, uh, the district needs, uh, uh, two actions from the board. Uh, for tonight, I would say, if we could, uh, focus on, uh, the action around this revised, uh, proposed Plan B hybrid schedule for our students and grades 2 to 12. And, uh, then if we could come back, either at the next meeting or sooner, uh, which I guess would take a special call meeting to do that, to talk specifically about, uh, lunch as it relates, um, to the high school level.
Okay, well, board members, are there other questions or comments?
I, I have a question. Um, and I'm just not turning this on because it seems that I, I would not buffer if, if I don't. So, um, I understand, uh, Dr. Felder, you're asking for our, um, uh, approval of, of this recommendation. But then you said, a second meeting to, we, do you, do we need to take action on lunch? That seems like that's in the weeds for board members.
Well, I'm happy if you don't. I mean, we could certainly come up with a plan. Uh, but my understa-, I could be totally, uh, incorrect here, but I'm under the impression that the board took action on lunch and, uh, outdoor lunch. And so we need to take action again, much like the board would have to take action on this current proposed Plan B plan. Well, someone's, someone's unmuted.
Can you unmute, please? And when I call on you, unmute. Thank you.
Uh, so, uh, Mr. Stevens, thank you for that question. And again, I could be totally incorrect, but, um, the outdoor lunch was an action of the board, much like the revised Plan B schedule that has grades 2, the 12th coming back, uh, fourth quarter, uh, on April 6. So unless I'm wrong, both would need, uh, action from the board to change those, um, uh, the current status of both of those items.
And you're not wrong. Um, I, I said that because, you know, I just don't believe that we should get in the weeds, but we are a little bit, but, um, uh, case a rasa ra, so.
Um, Ms. Dubison and then Mr. Atherton?
Yes, I just wanted to echo what Dr. Felder said, that I think the, the issue is that since the board has voted in its last, in January 11th, I think, to, that lunch should be eaten outdoors. Any revision to that plan is what the staff is asking for, that they feel that they would need to come back to you.
Mr. Atherton?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I would have to go back and look, but I thought the actual motion was it is preferred to eat outside and if not possible, to eat inside. And it didn't define in the actual motion, what was that? Wasn't possible. So, I mean, I'm open to have another meeting on it if we need it. But I, I think the motion was open enough that Dr. Felder, I mean, you have the ability to say it's not possible for these reasons, right? But if, if we need another meeting, I, I'm more than willing to meet and have the discussion.
Well, Madam Chair, I, I was just wanting to, uh, communicate that I, I trust that the three principals and Dr. Felder and her administration will do what's best and what's safe for our students. And, um, I, I will agree to that. And, and as Will said, if we need to come back and, and, you know, say, yes, we agreed to what the recommendation will be, that's fine, but, um...
Well, perhaps, Madam Vice Chair, we could have a motion to approve the reopening plans with the understanding that Dr. Felder has our blessing to make decisions about lunch practices with the understanding that we prefer outside eating whenever possible.
That makes sense.
Ms. Smiley?
Yeah, I think, um, with the, with the exception of the high school situation, I do still think we should, from my perspective, I would like to see us still, um, maintain what we had before, which was, um, outdoors, weather allowing, otherwise indoors with windows open and air purifiers. To me, that, the thing that is important to me in this is enhanced ventilation. Um, and so if, if a plan for, a plan for high school, whatever the plan, I think that the staff understands, um, and Dr. Felder, the importance of that, just like outdoor eating is, is safer, eating with the windows open is safer, you know? So that's, um, I, I'm a little uncomfortable with the sort of blanket we, we, um, we leave it to staff, because I, uh, I, I think it could be a slippery slope otherwise. So it's just my point of view.
And that is my recollection as well, that the motion, the exception had to do with weather. So I, I don't know that it was broad enough to encompass these without some revision of that by the board.
Gotcha. Mr. Atherton and then Ms. Hauser?
I, I was just going to say that I do trust the superintendent and staff to do the safest option. And I definitely would be comfortable with a motion tonight to cover that as well.
Ms. Hauser?
I, I just want to echo, um, I, I, you know, I just, I think, over and over again, that safety is first. And I would hate the board to be in the way of them making a decision on the ground in order to make things safer and work for their kids. So I just don't, I, I'm really worried about us getting in the way of them doing their job. And I think they're doing an amazing job. So I don't want to stay out of their way. So I support that motion.
Okay, I don't know that there was a formal motion made yet. Um, just to be clear, just to be clear, um, so I think my comfort level is around keeping elementary school and middle school as is also. I mean, I, I would, to really keep outside eating as much as possible. Um, so where I'm at is, you know, being in support of, of high school principals and Dr. Felder working through it at that level because of these reasons and, you know, with the safety concerns. Um, so that's where I'm at. Are there any other, um, questions, comments, concerns, motions?
Ms. Smiley?
I don't know if, if, if a motion right here makes sense or not with, because it's, we're not discussing the rest of the reopening. But, um, you know, I, I am fine with the high school principals and Dr. Felder working through, um, alternate lunch plans that involve enhanced ventilation, um, and sort of maximizing safety. So, without necessary, I mean, I want to hear what those plans are. Like, I think that's a fine thing to come back to the board with, but not, not contingent on board approval. So, um, I don't know if we need to vote on that or, um, it sounds like there's sort of consensus on the board.
I, I think we'd need to vote on it because it's different than what you have voted before. Um, I, I do think it makes sense, as you said, first, perhaps, to address the question that's up on the screen, which is the superintendent's recommendation to adopt the revised Plan B staggered reentry.
Do I have a motion to approve this proposal?
So moved.
I have a motion for Mr. Atherton. Do I have a second?
Second?
I have a second. Second from Ms. Stevens. Ms. Doyle?
Are we going to have further discussion about it or no? We're just, we're voting on the reentry plan?
Um, well, i- if you have more you want to say before we continue the vote, please. Go free.
Um, because this is, this is, this is, we're voting on the big shift of the plan, right? Up to this earlier orientation. Um, I guess, I mean, I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything, but I'll just, like, say a couple of things about it, which is, um, that, um, you know, regardless of whatever is happening at the state level that I think would cause us to do this anyway, um, I think doing this in a slow, staggered way like this makes a lot of sense. Um, things that make me feel better about this right now are some of the things that are really different than when we, than in January. And I hope those are some of the things that will help our staff feel a little bit more comfortable about it, too. You know, at that point, community transmission was skyrocketing and, like, positivity rates were like four times what they are right now. I mean, they're at like 1 and 1/2% right now in Orange County. Um, and we have, um, additional research and data about how to keep yourself safe with, um, well-fitting masks and about, um, asymptomatic spread in schools. And, you know, there's, we have a lot more information and the community situation looks a lot better. Um, and so I think, um, I think we're in a different place right now. Um, I, and I also wanted to, I saw a tweet from Kizmikiya Corbett that I wanted to, I just, I had to, because to people's point about, um, Dr. Felder's real focus on safety and doing what we can to be safe as a district, um, her niece was starting back to, um, okay, I, I want, that's an input, whatever. I'll just say, um, uh, Dr. Corbett tweeted, "Her school district has a plan her virologist auntie could get with." Um, you know, I, I think that when I look at all the measures of, of mitigation, I think, um, now that we have the air purifiers and some enhanced ventilation at lunchtime, I think we hit all of the boxes. Um, so, um, that helps me feel comfortable with this plan, sort of regardless of what is happening at the state level. Just wanted to share that.
Thanks, Ms. Smiley. Ms. Moore?
Yes, um, I just wanted to add, uh, Mr. Farrington, I think it was, mentioned about, um, active shooter drill or taking that into consideration for, um, the high schools. Um, that might be something we need to look at district-wide as well.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any other comments, feedback before I call the vote? Mr. Atherton?
Yeah, just one quick one. I, I hope that we are, as a district, able to look at possibly a teacher workday to help with this transition next week, since it's coming up so quickly. I know before, the plan gave the teachers, I think, three workdays to, to prepare. Um, but I, I know we don't have a lot of time. So I, I'm just putting that out there. I hope we could do something to help with that transition.
Okay, well, I'm going to keep calling the vote. Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens? Ms. Stevens?
Can you, I'm saying yes.
Okay, got you now. Thank you. Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
The reopening plan is unanimously approved. Um, do we need to have a vote now about lunch? It sounds like we might. Does someone want to call a motion for?
Um, yes, motion, go ahead.
No, I'm going to move that we give the principals discretion on planning, um, lunch and that they report their decision to their board, but they don't need our approval to move ahead. It's reported as an information.
Did you say, did you say they don't need our permission, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so that, that they get, that they have discretion, right.
Ms. Hauser, can we clarify that that is for high schools?
Um, we could. I guess, here's my question to the board, is if Dr. Felder and the principals come back and make a different, like, we, we know we want to be outside if we can, but if Dr. Feld, I, I want to give the, the Dr. Felder and the principals discretion on how they're going to administer the school day. And I don't, I just don't want the board involved in that. I think we, we, I, I, again, they've demonstrated to us, they get it on safety. Um, I like that they'll keep us informed, but I don't feel that we know more than they do or can add that much to this conversation. And I'm afraid of getting in their way. I'm being completely transparent about that.
Second that motion.
I have a motion from Ms. Hauser and a second from Ms. Stevens.
May I ask a point of clarification? I, I'm not sure it was clear if it is K-12 or high school.
Agreed.
I think it's everything.
K-12.
Okay, um, Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
Um, I'm going to vote no because I feel really strongly about elementary school and middle school, um, continuing to eat outside. And I just, I, I worry that this is a slippery slope and we're going to hear about equity and, and how it's not fair that the high schools get to eat outside and other schools don't. And I think sometimes it's just easier to be really clear about intentions. So I'm a no. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
No.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. The, Dr. Felder, is there anything more on this agenda item you would like to say? Or shall we move to our next item? You're muted.
There we go. You saw my lips move, but couldn't hear me. And would like to just say thank you. Thank you all. I, I just appreciate the board. And, um, I know we are still making very tough decisions. Um, but I appreciate, I appreciate it. So, okay, so I think we're ready now to move on. Uh, and so, uh, let's see. Okay. And so the second outcome, uh, for tonight's special called, uh, board meeting focuses on our students' mental and physical health as well as their academic achievement and the strategies that are being used or proposed to mitigate both. So, uh, no, uh, Dr. Zimmerman is not back tonight. Uh, this is just... This is just a quick recap that at your last meeting on January 25th, Dr. Kenesha Zimmerman, who is the co-chair of the ABC Science Collaborative Associate Professor of Pediatrics with Duke University School of Medicine, shared a compelling information regarding the negative impact of COVID-19 has on students' physical and mental health. The next two slides just speak to the strategies that we didn't get to share at the last meeting that are underway in our district to support both students and teachers. And so just at a very high level, next slide, please. Yeah, so just at a very high level, there are a number of mental health direct supports for students. There are supports for teachers in their work with students, as well as supports directly for teachers themselves. Examples include school-based therapy, the dispute settlement center, Friday Center SEL lessons and resources, which is a free online course for staff. Staff supports include the Employee Assistant Program. The dispute settlement center actually provides restorative practices and circus circle training and staff support directly to staff. And we've also had the pleasure of working with Kelly Underwood. You've heard her name a number of times. She is a licensed clinical social worker who has provided multiple sessions for staff focused on strategies for their own well-being. I have participated in a couple of them and can tell you that they have been quite beneficial. So, next slide, please. And so with regards to how we supporting students' physical health, the support includes all K-8 students are currently taking or have taken PE classes. Students are doing virtual workouts with a heavy emphasis on cardio where equipment is not needed. Classes are also participating in yoga and mindfulness. PE teachers are also encouraging and motivating students to work out on their own time. And so these are just some of the strategies that we are leveraging to support our students and staff's physical and mental health. Any questions about these supports available to our students and teachers? Okay, well, if not, we're going to move on then to the second part of this particular agenda item. And that would be around student achievement data and the strategies underway, but I know you've been waiting for this part of the agenda. So we're going to talk about that next. And so again, student achievement data strategies underway, as well as strategies planned to close learning gaps, both for students who need remediation, students who need enrichment, and students who need both. Because we know that just because a student may need remediation in one area doesn't mean that that student needs remediation in every area. It's not uncommon for students to have a jagged profile. And so we are looking to provide support across, across the board. So I will, at this time, turn the floor over to Dr. Chris Gammon, Executive Director, Curriculum Instruction, and to Ms. Connie Cremmons, who is the Director of Exceptional Children. And they will be joined by Ms. Kelly Parks, Assistant Principal at Pathways Elementary, and our three high school principals. They are still here because they are also going to participate in this part of the agenda. So, Dr. Gammon and Mrs. Cremmons.
Thank you so much, Dr. Felder, members of the board and larger community. I do want to say on the front end that I do have my three young children here with me, and they did very well on Monday evening's board meeting. Fingers crossed they're going to do great through this one as well, but if you hear any noises, it's them. So I want to go ahead and get started. As we all know, our COVID journey started in March of 2020, where there was an abrupt stop to teaching of new material and conducting state assessments. As a result, we did not have our usual tools for determining student learning progress. This did create a void for planning for this school year. During the first semester of the 2020-21 school year, Orange County Schools sought creative solutions to administer various formative assessments remotely. And Orange County Schools has recently been able to administer the end-of-course assessments for the fall semester at the high school level. While this continues to be an evolving process, Orange County Schools is taking steps to analyze the data. We currently have to identify gaps in learning and to formulate creative solutions to mitigate anticipated learning loss. So for this school year, Orange County Schools adopted a diagnostic assessment tool called ExactPath, in part as a result of the success we saw with this tool through our summer jumpstart camp. There will be more information about ExactPath later in the presentation. The first piece of data we will review is our beginning of the year kindergarten through third grade literacy assessment data via M-Class. The state does require a K-3 literacy assessment tool to measure foundational literacy skills, and M-Class is the tool that we are using. So on the next slide, you'll see that M-Class is a way to measure the development of our students' foundational literacy skills. The data does help us to detect who are at risk for early reading difficulties. It provides timely instructional support and prevents later, or to prevent later reading difficulties. M-Class also enables teachers to receive immediate targeted instructional recommendations to implement with each student at a personalized level to promote their success in phonics, reading comprehension, and vocabulary. We are in the process, as you'll see here in a few minutes from Dr. Dawson, of sifting through our middle-of-the-year assessment data. She will be able to show you some pieces with that data shortly. And it's critically important for us to note that based on frequent teacher feedback sessions throughout the first semester, we are very mindful of the many success stories that we've observed around foundational literacy instruction and student growth this year during remote instruction. There are areas within the M-Class data where students have shown growth in the midst of this shift to remote learning, and it's important to explore those success stories further as we're, you know, planning for our future instructional framework. So as far as M-Class goes, there are two key elements to the M-Class assessment. DIBELS, which is a measure of early literacy skills, and then TRC, which is a measure of reading comprehension. If you can compare core readiness level from last year to this year, and so we're going to go to the next slide. If you can compare core readiness level from last year to this year, you'll see a noticeable dip in student readiness, especially within the K-2 grade level. While it did impact first grade students the most, all grade levels did see a negative impact. I do want to be, to mention, this is very important to note, that these scores are compared to the national norm. But Orange County Schools only assesses our students in K-3 for M-Class. So what we'll be focusing on this evening are just the K-3 scores. You do see fourth and fifth grade scores as well, and those are the readiness levels at the national level for those grade levels. So again, as you can see on this slide, student readiness for core instruction at the beginning of the year has declined from the prior year in all grades, but most significantly in grade one. Similarly, students in need of intensive intervention at the beginning of the year have increased from the prior year in all grades, but again, most significantly in grade one. We're going to go to the next slide. You can observe that the student readiness decline hits all students. But in the early grades, kindergarten and first grade, it does fall the hardest across all racial groups. And kindergarten and first grade, especially first, as we've noted, will need specific and targeted opportunities to increase and solidify those foundational reading skills. You'll see shortly on slides shared by Dr. Dawson that our teachers have been working diligently already in that area. But we did want to make sure that we noted from the beginning of the year what that comparison looked like. This may include targeted recruitment of kindergarten and first grade students into the K-3 tutoring pilot, and you'll learn more about that later this evening, as well as targeted recruitment into summer camps and other literacy support opportunities. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Dawson. She's going to share more comparison data with M-Class from beginning of year to middle of the year over the last two school years.
Thank you, Dr. Gammon. So what we would like to do now is kind of take you through a journey of a student because we wanted to take a look at what our students went through from last year to this year. So on this slide, if you could picture yourself as the kindergartner last year. You started kindergarten last year, and when you look at the blue bar, the blue bar shows that when the kindergartners took the beginning-of-year assessment of M-Class, you see the breakdown of how we had 28% well below the benchmark. We had 21% below benchmark, 14% at benchmark, and then 37% above benchmark. That same cohort of students then, mid-year, took this M-Class assessment again. And what we see in the orange bar is that the 28% of well below decreased to 18% well below the benchmark. And then we decreased to 19% below the benchmark. And then we increased to 20% at benchmark. And then we went up to 43% above benchmark. And then COVID hit. March 13th, we were drastically at a different place. Now, those kindergartners came back to us as first graders this year. And if you take a look at the gray bar, as first graders, they took the M-Class again at the beginning of the year. And just like what Dr. Gammon shared, that compared to national norms, our first graders did take a pretty hard hit. And this is reflected in our own Orange County school first graders. Because now you see them coming back as first graders, we now had 59% of our first graders at well below benchmark. We had 14% at benchmark, below benchmark, 8% at benchmark, and then only 19% above benchmark. The same cohort of students now just took the mid-year of the M-Class, and here's where they are now. We have 43% well below benchmark. We have 9% below benchmark, 14% at benchmark, and then 34% above benchmark. So what you'll see is that, yes, you know, it was a drastic impact on our kindergartners when they left us. And it, it did impact them in a big way. And when they came back, they were set back quite a bit. But as you can see, with the work of the teachers, we are starting to get them back to, you know, starting to work toward, back to where they were when they left us. Well, when they took the assessment mid-year in their kindergarten year. So when you look at these charts, this is the same cohort. Now, of course, we understand that these are not the exact same kids because there might have been some shifts, but it is the cohort. It's the kindergarten that we followed from last year to first grade this year. And so this does show that our first graders did take the biggest hit. And if we go to the next slide, now it's, this is the journey of our first graders from last year to their second grade year this year. It's not as drastic as what we saw with kindergarten through first grade journey. But what is still difficult to see here is that we have over, you know, 43% of our students are below or well below the benchmark. And so we will continue to work on making that shift so that our students are more on the benchmark and above benchmark than below benchmark. So, but they didn't take a big of a hit as our first graders, our kindergarten first grade. But it's still concerning that we have such a high percent of our second graders this year that are below and well below the benchmark. So if we could go to the next slide, this journey tells us of our second grader from last year and the impact from moving from second grade into third grade this year. So here where it's noticeable is that, you know, yes, we still had a higher number of students starting out well below benchmark compared to the year before. But when you take a look at this year as third graders, at the well below benchmark, as you see, we stayed stagnant. But the below benchmark, we can see that there was an increase. So that is something that we want to dig deeper into as to why there was an increase of students below benchmark, especially when it didn't change from the well below benchmark. So, and then, but there's a positive here at above benchmark. Oh, I'm sorry. It's also not, not a positive, but above benchmark, we have from 40% the beginning of the year, they took a 10% dip. So these are some concerns that we have. I was looking at when they were second grade, an increase from beginning to mid-year. But as third graders, we see that there's a dip. So those are two areas we want to dig deeper into as to why that happened and what it is that we need to help get them back on track of where they were last year. So there's, of course, this is, this was very high level, and we just received our middle-of-the-year results for this year. So this is very high level. We will be working to look deeper and disaggregating the data on a more individual student basis. But we wanted to share with you the journey of our kindergarten first grade, first to second, second to third, to kind of see like what the impact of, you know, COVID has been for them, their learning journey. So, Dr. Gammon, I'll give that back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Dawson. On the next slide, we did want to note that while we're very much aware of the impact COVID-19 continues to have, you know, as we've noted in the previous slides, we also want to be mindful that prior to COVID, student growth in literacy as far as proficiency has been stagnant across all demographics in Orange County schools. And there has been an achievement gap that has maintained. And as you can see on this slide, and then we have shared this previously from the 2012 school year until last year, or excuse me, the, the school year prior to last, when we had our EOGs for the last time, you can kind of see that stagnant trend where those gaps have remained consistent across subgroups. We recognize that for our students who need more support, we do need to accelerate growth to close the gap. And we do anticipate that COVID has only served to exacerbate the trends that you see here. We would like to shift now to a district-wide view of how our students are doing on our district diagnostic tool, ExactPath, which was referenced earlier. So I'm going to turn it over at this time to Ms. Connie Cremmons.
Good evening, everyone, board members and the community at large. As Dr. Gammon said, we would now like to shift to a district-wide view of how our students are doing on our district diagnostic tool. As a reminder, ExactPath assesses skills versus standards, and it is these skills that our students need to master in order to meet the standards. Please note that Diagnostic 1 was the outcome data from the summer programming for kindergarten through eighth grade. The success of the students in the summer programs helped us to determine that ExactPath could help with two needs at that time. The need for a diagnostic assessment and a means to and a means for students to remediate lost skills or accelerate as needed via the ExactPath learning path. As stated earlier, we selected ExactPath because of what we observed in the summer. When students engaged in this tool, we were able to see growth. For the purpose of measuring student growth on skills during this current school year, please look at Diagnostic 2, which was administered in September, and Diagnostic 3, and we are in the midst of that testing window right now. The chart with the blue bars captures math data, and the chart with the purple bars captures reading data. It is important to note that schools are still in the midst of the testing window, and that is why you will only see about a third of the students having completed Diagnostic 3 in the elementary schools. What we see here in kindergarten through fifth grade is when we focus on the skills that students need to master, there is an increase in the amount of students that are scoring in the 50th to 99th percentile in both reading and math. If you think of percentiles as a line, more students are in the front of the line, meaning above the 50th percentile, that are in the back of the line. Why may this be happening? If you think back to the learning prior to September, our students have been given packets in the spring that focused on reinforcing skills with no new learning, and students had been out of school completely during the summer months. The goal of the instruction is to have more students scoring in the dark purple and dark blue, which both represent the 75th to 99th percentile. Presently, our students have had new learning plus the guidance of their teacher, combined with practice on skills where they have needed targeted practice. Additionally, the data from the learning path suggests that there are many students that are spending time on the ExactPath learning path. In a future board report, please look for the final data from the Exact In a future board report, please look for the final data from the ExactPath diagnostic once completed, as well as a comparison of student learning of students who are diligently completing the learning path compared to those students who are not currently engaged in the learning path. Next slide, please. When looking at the middle school data, it is worthy to note that most of the students in middle school have completed Diagnostic 3. This means that the comparison and conclusions that can be drawn from the data will be the most accurate. As we begin, let's remember that Diagnostic 1 was the assessment completed by the students who participated in the summer program. For the purpose of the analysis, the data compared are Diagnostic 2 to Diagnostic 3. In math, we can conclude that many more students have scored in the 50th to 99th percentile. This growth can be attributed to multiple things coming together. Middle school launched a curriculum in math that easily translated to the remote environment. Students have had access to the teacher. And many more students in the middle school grades use the learning paths as an intervention for students who did not score well on the first diagnostic assessment. In reading, the trend is slightly different. More students are scoring in the 75th to 99th percentile, while there is a decrease in the 25th to 75th percentile and an increase in the amount of students scoring in the 0 to 25th percentile. Because the middle schools are seeing an increase in the 0 to 25th percentile, the school-based PLCs or professional learning communities can use this information to determine if students are missing prerequisite skills that are keeping them from accessing the more complex reading skills needed for grade level mastery. Additionally, all of the students that are not gaining in skills should be receiving additional work to close the skill gaps. Next slide, please. As you can see on this chart, there is limited information available at the high school level for Diagnostic 3. We must remember that the high schools just completed the end-of-course exams and have just started new courses. It will be important that high schools do complete the assessments so that teachers have information regarding the skill development of students. And we will, again, in a future board report, we will provide you with this data and again analyze the findings that we that we see. At this time, we will transition to our high school principals, Dr. Carlos Ramirez and Mr. Matthew Hunt and Mr. Stan Farrington to provide information on student grades and first semester and, of course, assessments.
Okay, good evening, everybody, again. Mr. Atherton, I wanted to get back to on the ACT question, my apologies before, talk with our testing team. Anybody that missed the first administration last year, for those who are now seniors, received an email about a makeup day coming up. So if they've missed the administration last year, they were invited to take it again on the 23rd.
Thank you.
You're welcome. In terms of the 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 scores, or excuse me, the the grades, I wanted to preface this with with by saying just a sincere on behalf of all the high school team, a sincere thank you to our our students, our teachers, and our families. I think it's important that we start this by saying that, you know, for our students, they had to pivot immediately and figure out how to engage with virtual material, figure out how to submit an assignment, figure out how to how to, you know, hand in homework a different way, how to interact with teachers and peers in a different way. And they were on a steep learning curve at the beginning of the year. And I think what they did was 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 nothing short of miraculous. I think for our teachers, every single teacher became a first-year teacher again. And and I think that's that's important to know. And then to our families, as a parent of school-aged children myself, I think the type of engagement, the level of engagement, the the need to become very familiar with new learning platforms and what students were expected to do throughout the week completely changed for parents. And so I want to just say on behalf of the high school team, want to applaud our students, our teachers, and our families for doing an incredible job of transitioning to virtual learning. Also, I think it's important to put the data you're about to hear in context. When we look at national trends, when we look at statewide trends, we, you know, Wake County, for instance, and I'm basing this off of, you know, newspaper articles. So, you know, where where Wake County, I think 25% of their students, high school students, had at least one failing grade during their first quarter. Some other districts, it was as high as 45%. And so the band was was, you know, in the 20s to the 40s in many districts in North Carolina. And if you look at national trends, for for us at Orange High, I can say that it was 22% of our students had at least one failing grade. So while better than a lot of districts that that we've read about, it's still very concerning, obviously. You'll notice here that if you look at the quarter one data that approximately 66% to 70% of our students, as you look at throughout the the quarter one, quarter two, and semester data, you'll notice that about 66 to 70% of our students who've always received As and Bs continue to receive As and Bs. Of the other third, you'll notice a slide where typically 7% of students may earn Fs or 7% of grades, excuse me, are Fs in the first quarter. This this first quarter was 16%. And we can move to the to the next slide. Quarter two, we saw a similar a similar situation in terms of, again, about 65 to 70% of our students who who historically earned As and Bs continued that trend. I think that if you talk with teachers, and this is this is not this is not just an Orange High or an Orange County challenge, but this was something that that was a phenomenon we saw in many districts where the number of Fs grew slightly in the second quarter, engagement was was waning. I think that was a large part of it. But if similar numbers at Q1, we can move to the to the end of the semester. The next slide, please. For semester grades, that factored in our test scores. You know, we made some adjustments as a county because of the challenges that our students were facing. So for instance, we changed the grading scale for final exams. So and also made it so that exams could only help a student's final grade. And so you'll notice, again, this is this is the the big number. And Dr. Ramirez is going to address how how we're going to address these numbers. But you'll you'll notice, again, if you look at the As and Bs, fairly close to what it typically is, not quite as high, but fairly typical. What we're what we're really concerned about is is the number of Fs in terms of typically at 5%, 6%, now 14%. Again, relatively speaking, it's it's significantly better than a lot of neighboring districts. It's still very concerning to us when you you look at that nine-point gap. When you talk about the number of grades that were issued, that's hundreds of of courses that would not typically be failed that we need to figure out how to address. And again, Dr. Ramirez is going to is going to talk about that. And we can, we can move to the next slide. So when you talk about exams, and I can just, just so we're we're aware that that all students were required to take the exams in person. However, we know that we offered many other opportunities throughout the spring for those families that didn't feel comfortable taking them in person. So approximately 70% of our students in the county did take the exams. Obviously, that means 30% will be taking them at some point during the spring. We're offering makeup days, one in February, one in March, one in April, and then one in June. So students will have the chance to take those then. I think there there are, we'll be careful when we when we look, talk about EOC data to know that it's incomplete. And also, you know, there there is a lot of factors to consider. When we look at the, the game has changed, you know, I I hope to, this may be a bad analogy, I hope to watch a NBA basketball game later tonight. You know, so if we're if we're getting ready to play the the Lakers, that's that's going to be a tough task. This year was almost like we're playing the Lakers, but you're you're, we're not playing with, you know, five players, we're playing with three, and the rules have changed. And in fact, we have less time to score the amount, the same amount of points. We, you know, the the amount of instructional time declined. Virtual instruction became significantly more challenging than in-person instruction. I think about our teachers, too, you know, who the very best teachers excel because they're able to form those positive relationships with students. You know, there are students that excel in the classroom because of that classroom environment, because of that rapport. And, you know, we were stripped of that opportunity, you know, to develop to develop those relationships like we normally would. So the game has changed, however, tests have not changed. So the same test that we would expect to take in a traditional setting is exactly what our students took now. And so I think it's important when we talk about the data, you know, moving forward, I think it's, you know, dangerous and potentially irresponsible to think about it in terms of an apples-to-apples comparison. So in terms of our our results, I can only speak to our Orange High results at the moment in terms of there are some areas where our our results were higher than they were a year ago. You know, and there are some areas where they were lower than a year ago. Particularly, you know, in math, you want to think about it that way, there's a cumulative effect. So of course, our our Math 1 students, you know, had an eighth, a very difficult eighth-grade year and a very difficult ninth-grade year, and you know, and that may play out in the results. But I just want to provide some context about our our EOC courses. Dr. Ramirez.
You're on mute, Dr. Ramirez. Thank you, Mr. Hunt, so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Hunt. Okay, so we need to acknowledge our our teachers in in I don't know how many different ways without their, without their support, without their thinking out of the box, without going above and beyond. They made this work. When the high school principals met after quarter one, we were we were panicking because we saw a lot of, a lot of failures. And our teachers worked their magic and were able to bring those numbers down. It did not happen by accident. It happened through hard work, commitment, and passion, and a lot of sleepless nights. So to all our teachers out there, you are heroes, you are number one asset. The show still goes on. And what are we doing for the students that that are struggling and then those that aren't? Now, this this under Plan B, we are required to teach 100% of the assessed curriculum, 100%. Under Plan B, we only have 55% to 60% of the time. So we have to pivot, develop a new plan to hit as many of important teaching standards, or we call them essential standards here, so our kids could be prepared for the next grade or the next level or the next phase of their of their their lives. So what we're what we're looking at, and this is the kind of high level right now, is we're looking a focus with our on our targeted groups. Now, targeted groups does not only mean students that are struggling academically, but we have students that are struggling through social, emotional components of online learning. We know that we had to learn a lot overnight when we shifted to online learning. So we have learned, our teachers have learned a lot and tried a lot of strategies. And a shout out to Dr. Dawson, Dr. Felder's team for supporting us and and allowing us the the flexibility to try different things. So there are certain things that we've learned that we're going to hone in on. And there are newer applications and strategies that are out there. We are still learning how to do this. A big shift is going to be in adjusting our curriculum maps to reflect the amount of time we have left in the year. I'd like to walk you through a a student who took Spanish 1 last year. They only got two-thirds of the curriculum, two-thirds. And now this year, if you add the year up, they're only in Spanish 2, they're probably going to get maybe 60 to 70% of the curriculum. Now they're going to move to Math 3. So we have to look at adjusting the curriculum map to keep, do a catch-up, if you if you would, for our students. And that requires us to rethink our summer school. In the past, the summer school has been designed for students who were struggling and needed credit. Yep, we're still going to do that. But we also want to look at the what we call the performance-based classes, welding, ag, woodshop, band, certain science classes that require a lot of hands-on experiments. And then we want to increase the course offerings through Edgenuity. And there's going to be, of course, a cost to that. Edgenuity is a program we use for credit recovery. So if a student did not pass the class but was close to passing, we can create an individual pathway with the courses or the material a student would need to cover to receive credit for that class. They get credit for it, and that will help them graduate. Now, these are just a few of the strategies. We would like to have the opportunity to sit down with our teachers in our department to tighten this plan and for summer school. So a whole new summer school plan that we're that we're hoping that we could put together. Maybe even having a before session before the Fourth of July session and then after the Fourth of July session. So we're we're looking forward to working with Dr. Dawson and her team and others to develop this this plan. We have to look at catching our students up this summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez. Board members, any questions, comments? Mr. Atherton and then Ms. Hauser.
So the first question I had is, do we know the number of students that we have not been able to contact? Or also along the same vein, are we seeing an increase in our dropout rate? And if so, how are we addressing? So kind of three questions in the the same vein.
Well, I think the the, I think it's too early to talk about the dropout rate or implications for graduation rate at this time. I think it's it's, I've seen it too early to to talk about that. I think we, I can tell you that we have 171 students that I'm really, really worried about. I can tell you that we have X number of students that have failed four classes or three classes or two classes. And those are students that we've reached out to with individual phone calls, home visits, trying to do everything we can to pull those those students in and encourage them to come for small groups. I think we had actually had a third-quarter plan. We're going to pivot pivot now because of our now our new plan. But we had, we had reached out to all 170 of those students to say, we'd like to have you at a supervised learning lab, work with an individual, work with an adult to support you in your classes throughout the quarter. Now, now we hope that those students come to the building. But I will say that not all of those students are comfortable coming to the building. And and it's it's around half who have said that they are are comfortable to the comfortable, at least the ones that I've called, it's about half. So of course, we want to, as as, and that's, I guess, one thing to consider, as people's comfort level, we know this is a fluid situation, and COVID has impacted people in many different ways. And some, you'll feel comfortable being in the building, some do not. And we hope over time, their comfort level will change, especially those students who, you know, are struggling most.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Dr. Ramirez, is it the same for you?
Yes, our numbers, yes, our numbers are roughly the same. Our our counseling staffs and our social workers have done everything that they know how to do in the safest manner, of course. We do need more time to see what what those numbers will look like. In the spirit of transparency, our teachers have done, and admin team, they've done everything they can. We cannot make a kid log in and show up. We just can't. Our experience running our small groups, we've had success with students that were not showing. We had like 120 something, too, that we were concerned about. And we invited every single one of them to come to our small group program. We had, we had anywhere from 38 to 58 show up. What we found, though, is some students just needed structure. They just needed a place to do their work uninterrupted. I'll share a little story. I had a ninth-grade student that had three other siblings, and they lived in a three-bedroom apartment. Mom, a single mom worked out of the house, and they had all of them on the internet at the same time. And the student had to do his classwork with his seven-year-old brother. And those seventh-grade teachers were doing everything, everything they can to keep students engaged, like singing, dancing, doing yoga. Well, this is difficult for this young man to concentrate on his work. So he begged me not to end the program. He needed to come because he he needed that structure. So we believe for those students, as Mr. Hunt said, we're going to target them as for a target group and do everything we can to get him to come to school. And if, of course, they feel safe to do so. It is a battle. It's one that we are all fighting, and we're having some success. We're just not having the success that we are used to when we have our kids with us. So we We're just not having the success that we are used to when we have our kids with us. So we have not given up. We will not give up. We will continue fighting for our students and to get them the education that need and they deserve, one kid at a time.
Thank you, both of you. Thank you. I know that. You know, the teachers work hard every day to reach out to students, parents and counselors and, you know, y'all are doing a fantastic job. And I appreciate it. I guess one other question is, Mr. Ferentz, on to?
I would just like to add really, really quickly that our staff, our team, and I call them, we call them the three amigos, but it's. Those two great guys over there at Cedar Ridge and Orange High and myself, we have really just become big time hope builders. We are really working on dealing hope to these kids because there's some really almost hopeless situations that we're trying to overcome. And one thing about it is, hope, we believe and know is a powerful thing. And without that everyday feeling of hope, every other strategy we put into place at our schools will fall flat. So we've got to make sure we keep these guys feeling positive. And and our teachers are doing an incredible job of communicating and reaching out. I mean, we're doing crazy stuff. I don't, I don't, I don't promote this and push this, but we've had teachers going and delivering items to students how like a like a laptop charger and dropping it off. You know, right there at the front stoop and leaving or food supplies or whatever. So all of these things are in effort to keep their hope alive. So that they can continue to push and drive and overcome some of the many challenges. So the dropout rate, we're certainly going to do everything we can to keep them dropping into the classes and keeping a positive attitude. Thank you.
And also, um, excuse me, Ms. Atherton, to answer your question about the students that we have not been able to contact. The social workers, I will say, worked extremely hard with the school staff to locate students and we are down to. They have located all five students that were not showing up at all. Now, some of the students that I think they are speaking of are students that we know where they are. And we are trying to, you know, encourage them to get online and be more involved in their classes. But we have my social workers worked extremely hard and they have located all but five students at this time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cobb. Ms. Hauser?
Well, I have to tell you, for challenge. These pieces will fit together.
Your, Ms. Hauser, your buffer. I want to try to turn your camera off so we can hear you.
Is that better?
That's better. Thank you so much.
Okay, sorry about that. So I just want to say it's, you know, it's really tough times. It's really challenging. It's a, it's an impossible situation and the pieces don't fit. And I think every board member and I think everybody is getting calls from people who are crying or really frustrated because they can't make it work. And I don't know how you can say it's it's not you, you know, because people are taking it personally. And I think there's a question about how it's not personal, but it's really challenging and the standards we use in the past might not exactly apply. So in that context, I will say, are we, how? And when we look at the numbers, there's a question about how do we look at these numbers? Because one of the questions I've had that have come to me is, are the teachers using more lenient grading standards? This year, and it's not about being critical, it's about when it comes to the board, it helps us to know what how big the problem is. Because it's our job to resource the solutions. So then the first question is, you know, is the grading standard from this year to last year where you did the comparisons? Are we using the same grading standards? And then the second question is like the the lack of participation, these kids that are not participating, when we showed the percentage comparisons. Was it based on the same amount of participation or did we exclude? I guess if a kid doesn't participate, do they count in the zero to 50 category or zero to 59 category? Or are they not counted at all? So I just was curious, is it worse than you're showing us is really the essence of the question.
This is Matt again. I can speak to the first piece and then and then Ms. Hauser, if you want us to speak to the high school data, we can do that also. In terms of the grading, I think the answer is absolutely yes. I think that. I think that if you talk with teachers, if you talk with students, if you talk with families, or at least, you know, I think everybody's coming to conclusion that. This, no matter how hard we try, this year is going to be that we can't replicate what we normally see. If you think, if you look at the way that we approached our final exams, for instance. You know, our teachers did a lot of things that they wouldn't normally do for final exams in terms of making differentiated exams in some cases. Or student choice in other cases, or or cutting the the length of an exam. But ultimately, at the end of the day was our exams could only help a student. And so there were some pretty significant changes or departures from what we normally would do in order to support students currently. And I think that the one piece that I'll just point to, and I strongly believe in this, Dr. Ramirez mentioned the teachers. And and I worry that the the longer we have stayed out of out of school, the narrative, I think, about teaching across the country has shifted in a way that I'm I don't feel comfortable with. Our teachers have done an incredible job. And what what they've been stripped of is if you look at the students who normally don't perform as well. A lot of students, you know, at least in my experience, are driven by the relationship in the classroom. And I don't know about anybody on the call, but if you were to ask me, you know, my my high school chemistry class, I probably couldn't tell you three things I learned in that class. But I know I really cared about that teacher and that's why I wanted to perform well. I think we, for those students that historically have not performed well, not having that everyday in person relationship with the teacher. Or that teacher coming, finding them at lunch and bringing them back to their classroom and helping with them an assignment they didn't do. You know, I think that 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 has has really had an impact on those students that have struggled historically. We've also found in the data that you'll find that in in classes, as Dr. Ramirez mentioned in his slide. There are, there are departments that are typically hands on departments or performance based departments where, you know, failure rates have gone up considerably. Those are, those are classes that we want to loop back into our credit recovery options to our summer school options that normally don't have significantly high failure rates. But do in this virtual environment because of a lack of engagement, because those courses just maybe made for whatever reason. I don't want to speculate about or make a generalization, but for certain courses where students thrive in the building and they're just significantly different now. And I, I don't want to talk anymore if anybody else wants to jump in, but happy to answer your second question if if needed.
Could you repeat the second question? Ms. Hauser?
Let's see, I'll turn off the video. The second question was of the kids, how are the kids that are not participating? Are they in the numbers or have they been left out? So has our sample size gone down and, you know? You know what I'm saying? So if you got, if you, if you didn't participate, do you get counted in the zero to 59? Not get counted at all?
This, I can, I can answer from a high school perspective. And then maybe if there's an exact path question, that would probably be better suited for the elementary or middle school perspective. From the end of course. Standpoint, they're not factored in on any of our proficiency rates. So the 30% who have not taken it are not factored in. They, they will be eventually, once they do take it and one of those makeup days. Obviously, one of our, and we haven't seen a trend in terms of, for us at least, for those 30%, there is no, there is that have not taken it. There's no correlation between not taking it and maybe their grade point average, you know, or who has not taken it. It's just, it's kind of a random. In terms of, in terms of what their past history is. But we do know that when looking at data at the end of the year. You know, the longer people stay out and the longer the distance between when they learn the curriculum and when they test. You know, we expect to see potentially some declines there, even though we'll provide some review opportunities. But that's why we've made some adjustments with our with our exam grading stances, because we didn't want that to hurt our students during the pandemic.
Ms. Hauser, you know, you asked about if we adjusted the grading policies, we did not formally, we did not do that. What we did ask our teachers to do is to take every student and their performance case by case. Every, every family had a unique situation. So our teachers are given the flexibility. To determine what mastery would look like under a student's learning environment. And then your other question about are this just a true reflection of the grades? I think a bigger question is, under the circumstances of having a shortened year or teaching 100% or trying to teach 100% of the curriculum in a 60% timeframe. I could tell you that our teachers tried their best and had to make individual adjustments per class depending on the participation rate. As we said earlier, it was very difficult to get students to show up, even if they did show up, the participation was challenging. We did not require students to show their, their, their backgrounds when they were learning because of privacy. So in, in summary, the grades reflect what our teachers were able to have our students accomplish over time. And it's not, if you look at it to last year, we can't. We just can't.
Ms. Hauser? Sure?
You may do turn your, yeah. Okay, so just to respond, because I think that there's two sides of this coin and my questions. I mean, we're all here, the work that's being done in the schools and the works that you, the accommodations that you're making to keep people. Students and teachers and staff moving, you know, through, it's almost like sludge, right? It's like, how do you keep it moving? It is so difficult. And and how do you keep people? You know, keep coming to it and keep working on it. You know, from a board perspective, the question is, what do you need from us? So that's why I'm trying to get to is, what do you need, you know, what resources? And I don't want to undercut, you know what I mean? It's, it's, it's like, you don't want to undercut the ask because of the accommodations that you've made. So it's kind of two sides of the question. I don't, I don't, maybe I don't need to deliver it, but that's, that's where I'm coming from.
I think, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, Ms. Hauser, I think you guys demonstrated what we need from tonight in allowing. Not Dr. Dr. Felder, as well as the principals to kind of. Take the lead on on mapping out what needs to happen safely for the lunch period. I think those are huge steps in the right direction and allowing us to. You know, really take a real serious look at what we can do and what's going to work best for the individual students that we have in the building. And so I just want to say thank you for that. And hopefully that mentality will continue, but certainly we're going to make the most of it. So thank you.
Other board members, Ms. Smiley?
First, just appreciation for all you, all of you and your staff. I know this year is really unbelievable. I'm really. A group of students that I'm really concerned about, and I'm curious how you all are thinking about our students. And this is to the the high school principals or really just, I mean, all of the other grade levels as well. It's students, I can't remember which, Dr. Ramirez, it might have been you who brought up a student like this, who. The students who either have are choosing virtual, but also are having a hard time engaging virtual, right? Or the students who are going to do hybrid and their off weeks when they're virtual and, you know, it's, it's the kids who are having a hard time. Engaging virtually. And I'm just. I guess there could maybe each of those separately, sort of the kids who are who were benefiting from the learning labs, right? In order to be able to go into the school every week, do you have any thoughts about sort of how to handle that now that that's actually going to be less? Maybe or won't be a less of an opportunity for them. And then also, you know, the the kids who've chosen virtual, you know, and their families. Like I was doing the math on it and it looks like two thirds of our black students are choosing to remain virtual only. And and so what, while I think coming back into buildings is going to make a huge difference for a lot of kids, especially social emotional. I really am also very concerned about just how we're helping and supporting the kids who are who are staying in virtual too. So I might have put two questions in one, but just I would love to hear how you all are thinking about each of those groups of kids.
Ms. Smiley, the first strategy is to focus on targeted groups and each school is going to do that, however it fits their schedule. We are looking at being flexible with students that can. And if there is space, we want to bring them every day. And and with others, it's looking at. The high school started 11 o'clock. What can we do in the morning with those students? So we're going to open that up and have a robust discussion with our staff and ask them, our teachers, what they think. And as far as what what we need, I think it's important to. Look at the teacher perspective on balancing the work, home life and the expectations that we place on them. Because it's a delicate balance even in a normal year. So. We're actually excited to know now that we're going to start and we have the schedule in place and we're going to get to work.
And and if I can add just one thing really quickly. You know, it was an adjustment, a major adjustment for our teachers in the beginning to begin teaching remotely. That was a big learning curve. But I will say that they've gotten pretty doggone good at it at this point. And they are doing some really creative and engaging instruction in those class sessions. Even though the time is not super long, it's about 55 minutes or so, about an hour. But they are really making the most of that time and doing a great job. And I'll say, many of our black students have not chosen to come back. You're right. But what I'm finding is many of them are are maintaining because of what's going on in the classroom. And the effort is being made, the extra effort is being made to to make the learning meaningful and to make it relevant for them. And so they're able to continue thriving, even though they're remote and they are electing to remain remote. And that's okay right now this year, because a lot of folks are making that selection. However, I think they're going to come back and be able to hit the ground running come August. And and I'm hoping that we all can come back and hit the ground running. But I don't think. The that it's, it's the fact that they're remote is going to hurt them to some extreme degree. I think they're getting it and they're choosing to remain remote. And so that's, that's a good thing. As long as they're engaging and logging into class, many of our black students are actually doing better in a remote environment at partnership. So I'm excited to see that. And so I've seen some improvements there. So just wanted to share that little tidbit.
Thank you so much.
Other board members? Thank you all so much.
All right. So this, if we could go to the next slide, we're going to talk about. How how the school system is using the structure of multi tier system of support to support students while we're remote, hybrid, or when we're back in person. So multi tier system of support or MTSS is a tool to help us know who and how to address. Individual needs to close the achievement gap. It's important that everyone has an understanding. That the MTSS is designed to provide both intervention and enrichment for students. So that's important because we talk about intervention periods within the school schedule. That intervention period is is meant to be used to help students catch up or to remediate skills. But also to provide opportunities for students who want to go deeper into a subject, to have that ability to go deeper or to accelerate. So really meeting the the needs of all students. Another tenet of MTSS is it's important to understand that it also. that it also supports the academic needs or challenges or enrichment needs of students as well as the social, emotional. So sometimes we talk about the multi-tier system of support only in the terms of academics, but it does have behavioral support. And it's important to see that there are, um, three tiers. So tier one, that green is what all students, um, get. So we call that is the core instruction. Tier two is supplemental. So, um, within MTSS supplemental might be, the teacher pulls a small group of students over, um, and reteaches a concept that they're having, um, difficulties with. Or there can be more formalized where they need weeks of, um, intervention to remit, to fix a skill, or they might need weeks of, uh, enrichment. And then that third level in the red is the intensive support. And this is more one-to-one to really get, um, a high level of structure and intervention for a student. Data is collected at each tier and is used to make instructional decisions to determine if students are responding to the instruction and interventions. And a problem solving process is utilized to decide whether the instruction and intervention should be maintained and layered. Um, and speaking of a, um, support for students, at this time, we have Mrs. Parks, Assistant Principal at Pathways Elementary. Uh, she is leading the K three pilot tutoring program. And she's going to talk about her experience and how that is working with students. So I now turn this over to Mrs. Parks.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. So I did want to chat just a little bit about our tutoring program. If you want to go ahead and advance to the next slide for outline. So our tutoring program was an extension of the summer jumpstart camp. Um, and we captured many of the same students. Plus, um, we added students outside of the profile that the students were served in the summer jumpstart camp. The, the students were directly and intentionally targeted for their reading skills and the support that they needed. We identified these students, um, through a team approach. We included their current teacher at the time of school release. Any previous teachers that had had intentional experience with the child. Our school-based literacy coaches across all seven elementary schools. The family of the child and the principal at each school site. So it was definitely a team approach. So right now in our tutoring program, we have 71 students and 24 teachers, um, that are working with these students. Additionally, we have, um, specifically matched the skill needed for the student to the teacher. And, um, they are focused on a group of students for specific, um, area of expertise of that tutor. So for example, we have matched kindergarten teachers who are very skilled in phonemic awareness and introductory reading skills. And we've matched those to students who are not necessarily kindergartners, but are students that need that expertise from that teacher. So using, um, multiple, um, data components, the teacher is matched with a student or students who need additional work in phonemic awareness for that particular scale in that example. We had approximately 300 names that were submitted from this team approach that we, um, adopted with the tutoring program. In the fall, many of the parents who were invited to the tutoring program did express concern for that additional, uh, layer of remote learning. So while our approach is very specific and intentional with us, with small group, like, um, my, my high school colleagues mentioned earlier, it was a learning curve. In particular for our youngest learners that we are capturing for this program. Um, and so at this time, because tutoring is offered in a virtual aspect, some families did decline at this time. We are reaching back out to those families every single week, um, to see if they have changed their mind, if they've expressed interest. And we are enrolling those families as they, um, as they get more informed decisions. So presently we have just added, um, also kindergarteners. So we've enrolled about 30 more kindergarten students. We did wait on that because it was, um, important for us to, to help them understand how to access technology and how to understand, um, what school really is. And so, um, they have been added and they are very excited already. So that will continue through the rest of the school year with our kindergarteners as well. So tutors work directly with parents. They've set up schedules that determine the best time for the student and the family. Our tutors are working with students after school, in the evenings, on weekends, and through holiday breaks. So that there was no lapse in service for those children. The tutors are using multiple online tools for several different reasons. So our reading eggs and reading A to Z, um, programs that we use with all of our, um, students. We are using those intentionally for support for these students as well. And we are partnering with their tutor so that they can practice those skills during tutoring and with independent work outside of their tutoring sessions. So if you want to advance to the next slide, I can show a breakdown. So there's three different components and this is, this is, um, a piece of data that we've been able to collect. This does not mirror our current kindergarteners that have been added. But to, to break it down, so the M class breaks down the components of the science of reading. And if you'll notice that we did have, um, of, of the 71 that were mirrored in this, in this piece of data, 50 of those students did have an improved score. 21 of them did not. It is important to note that with our M class score, it is a compilation of skills that articulate the science of reading. And so there are multiple different, um, tests and aspects that, that factor into a child showing improvement in an M class score. The Lexile level, which is the second component of the graph, um, so Lexile serves two functions. It determines the difficulty of a text and it determines a student's reading ability level. So that was a factor, um, something we wanted to capture. It, it serves us well when students are looking at independent work and what we're able to give them so that they can show mastery on their own as well. And then the last component of the graph is their reading level. So for these purposes, obviously our goal is to, to have them grow independently in their reading skill and feel that confidence and success in, in their ability to read and comprehend. And so this, um, the reading level, we did have quite, um, a few of our students that did show an increase in reading. And again, it's important to note that this is their independent reading level. And so many students are able to perform and show mastery of skills with, um, adult support. But obviously our goal is to move towards independence. So we've seen a lot of growth thus far. Right now, our team is working in preparation for, um, our summer work to capture and nurture, um, this same subs, subgroup of students and also to, um, to grow the program even more, to capture more families that are interested in this. Were there any questions?
Ms. Smiley, and then Ms. Doyle, and then Ms. Atherton.
These results look great and I'm really excited to hear, um, one of the things that I've been really reading a lot about lately is like high dosage tutoring and just the impact that that can have on these grades. It's on like high school math, certain places is just huge. And so it's really exciting that you're piloting this already. I, um, the question I have is, it might be like, um, we need to go back and look at that. But, um, in terms of those score improvements, um, that looks awesome. And I'm wondering how much it's like, understanding that a, the student would typically show sort of some growth over whatever that time period is. How much more do we think this adds to sort of the typical growth of, you know, a TRC level or, you know, whatever it is?
Right. And, and, and I think that, um, not necessarily the, the, the score is our goal. It's more of the skill. And so it's, there's so many intricacies that go, that play into their M class proficiency. We don't necessarily focus on our Lexile growth, but it is, it's an easy skill for us to have a conversation with families about. If they want to, you know, capture material, materials on their own. And then, um, like in a reading level, that's often, I would say, most articulated with families. And so there's, there's so many different components. That's why we're partnering with the teachers. There's, there's often conversations between the tutors and the current teachers. Because if we're capturing this, this is based on our M class capture, which is three times per year. And that's, that's not frequent enough. And so it's that constant conversation back and forth.
That's great. So, but with the reading level, maybe you could say, you know, typically a, a student grows this many letters in, uh, in the first half of the year and this student has grown this many or something like that.
And we, we do, um, we follow a general guideline for that and it depends on the grade level. There's obviously big gains in kindergarten and first grade, um, years. And then, um, second grade beyond third grade, traditionally the, the intention is for comprehension. But we know that so many of our older elementary students, they still struggle with basic concepts of reading and we want to nurture that. So it depends on the grade level, what, what the, the goal and the gains are. And so we, we follow that guideline, but we also look more intentionally at not just the reading level, but the skill as well needed to, to be able to move on to the next level.
Thanks, Ms. Parks.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Doyle?
Thanks, Ms. Parks. This is really exciting, uh, to see, especially when we know it's been a difficult year. And, uh, as Ms. Smiley has shared, um, she's passed, she's passed around some great articles about tutoring programs that are really exciting. I have a couple of questions just, um, so, so you piloted this. I know you're System Principal Pathways, but this is district wide, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then I was curious, like how, um, how many months did this, did this continue from, like, did you say the end of the summer, like right through now? So this is, you know, four to six months worth of tutoring or?
Well, so this, the data that you're looking at right now is just isolated data for the students that are enrolled in our tutoring program currently. There was, um, quite a bit of overlap of students who were captured from our summer jumpstart program that transitioned into our tutoring. So the tutoring began in October. And this most recent capture is from our beginning M, um, M class. And then our middle of the year M class, which was just completed recently. So what we're looking at right now is from October to January.
My last question is, what really stands out is the, you know, the, the three quarters or more of kids who improved. And I'm curious, like what, what are you envisioning for the smaller portion that didn't improve? Like what more, um, what are options beyond what's already happening for, for reaching that, that, um, the rest of the kids?
Um, so if, so obviously I can drill down into who those children are that did not show a lot of growth. There's been several factors that, uh, commonalities that I've been able to find among those children who did not grow, show growth. There are things like participation. Um, we did have, sorry, I'm at school, the bell's ringing. So we did have some children who have struggled with participating in their sessions. That was pretty common among the children who did not show improvement. There are, uh, quite a bit of our students who are participating, who are not, um, primary English speaking students, but we've been able to partner them with, um, tutors who can support that aspect. That was one transition that we had from the summer program to our current tutoring program that we were really excited. We were able to engage much more students, um, in their, in their native language. But as far as the, the lack of improvement, um, to drill down into those specific students, these are a lot of our students who have IEPs. And so there's a lot of conflicting, um, they, they've expressed, you know, I'm on, I'm online all day. I'm getting my regular ed instruction. I'm getting my special education instruction. And then I'm also getting instruction in tutoring. So that was a lot of the, the feedback that I gained from these families.
So that might go back to your point about right now it's only offerable virtually and the kids are also virtual all the time. So yeah, okay. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
And I, and I, I'm going to jump in. I think you make a good point about the full remote. And as we bring students in, then we can reassess and see how we might be able to offer some of this in person as well.
Mr. Atherton, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Um, so Ms. Parks is, uh, I saw that you have reading eggs, uh, reading A to Z, Letterland. And is Book Nook going to be the next one that slides in there?
Um, I am not opposed to that. So we are utilizing any resources that we can get our hands on. And I think that that's been the beauty of this program is that there are no like mandated, this is the program you need to use. We are capitalizing on the, the massive amount of resources that we have at our disposal, which has been wonderful. And so with this tutoring, because it is so small group, our, our teachers are able to focus on between one and three children. In these sessions, they're able to use whatever resources is a best fit for that child and that skill and that group.
And I'm just going to, um, chime in here, Mr. Atherton, you're absolutely right. To support the work that Kelly Parks, Ms. Parks, thank you so much for the, um, great work you have done and are doing to support our young readers. But, you know, as the data has shown, you know, our young students really need literacy support. And that's why we are, um, adding on. We were kind of like the mitigation for fighting COVID. We're doing the mitigation for fighting, you know, um, the literacy development that we have to push that forward. And that's why we got the Book Nook to add on to additional support. And, um, you know, this will be added for K through eight for Book Nook services for our students. So we're looking to see what other additional supports and in different ways. What Ms. Parks is doing with reading eggs and, um, reading A to Z, it's a different approach than how Book Nook is doing it. So that's why we're kind of creating this multi-layered approach. Getting added the literacy skills, but in different approaches to really support our students and to really build up their literacy skills, especially when they're younger. Because as we know, the students, you know, they are learning to read K through three, but after third grade, they are reading to learn. So we've got to make sure that that foundation is there. But also we don't want to leave behind those students that are beyond third grade that still need that additional, um, literacy support. So that's why we are doing multi-pronged, multi-layered. And I know, um, that the next slide that we have also will touch on, um, additional things that we're doing to support and adding on. So even on top of the K through three, we're doing the K through eight literacy tutoring program that will encompass Book Nook, but other additional programming. We're taking a look at creating a Saturday school for K through 12 students and taking a look at how are we, um, integrating a combination of that intervention, academic focus. But then even for our most struggling students, as Dr. Felder said at the very beginning, we may have strengths in one area and weaknesses in another, right? So creating Saturday school and opportunity for students to get additional, um, academic support. Because what Ms. Parks, you know, what she shared was really important that her students and our students in those tutoring sessions, it was frequent, right, over time. And even during holidays, like they couldn't have that gap. So adding that another layer on a Saturday, but then also creating opportunities for them to do things that are enriching for all of our students, regardless of what they're struggling at. And that will incorporate SCL, you know, opportunities to build their social, emotional and, um, in other areas and bringing steam back into their, their learning with the science and technology and all of that. Then we're looking at developing a summer school program for our pre-K through 12 because we, we can't have gaps in our learning. So we're creating that continuous learning opportunity for all of our students. And then, you know, tying in all of the SCL opportunities. Because as we heard from Dr. Felder sharing, um, Dr. Zimmerman's work around our students' mental health, that is very important to us. And so how can we get back to allowing kids to find ways to be social again with each other? Finding ways to, you know, just be kids again, you know, um, and having opportunities to learn. And how can we help support develop the whole child? So, you know, I, I'm very honored to be working with, um, the team here at Orange County Schools. And I know each of us are. And when you are here listening to our principals, um, you know, and, um, assistant principal and how we represent our teachers and all that they're doing. You know, and our principals have been talking about the teachers and all that they are doing. And I think I just wanted to take a moment to say, um, that our school leaders and what all they are doing. And I think I just wanted to take a moment to say that our school leaders and what all they are doing. It's been impressive. But, you know, this isn't, this, we're not done and we've got so much more to do. And so we just wanted to share with you and we'll be sharing more details about each of these programs as we are in development right now. But we are excited about, you know, completing that and bringing that back to the board to let you know. And most excited to let families know so that they can start, you know, signing up when it's ready to do that, so.
Thank you. That sounds great. And especially to hear how these connect. And also, we're not just trying to use the tools we have, but we are looking at different methods because we know all kids learn differently and one may click for them where another doesn't. So thank you all so much.
And so Dr. Gammon, I think you want to close us out on the next slide?
Sure thing. I'm happy to, Dr. Dawson.
Two questions before we go on to the next topic. And go, first question is to Ms. Parks, you know, on the kids who advanced and the kids who didn't. What does it take to move from red to blue, you know? You know, what kind of difference do you have? What do you have to see to say you improved versus you didn't?
Well, so improvement could just be a score gain or it could be like a reading level increase. So there's several different components that could show that that child improved in that area.
Okay. And, okay, thank you. And Dr. Dawson, in terms that we're looking at, one of the programs that I'm just really fascinated by is the readiness program that New Hope did last week. So rather than a catch-up, it was kind of a look ahead to where the student needs to be and catch them up to that. So are we looking at programs like that and possibly, it wasn't possibly expanding that?
Yep. And I want to say, is Ms. Wilson still on?
I am still here.
If you wouldn't mind speaking to that, because I know you're very familiar with that program.
Ms. Howler, would you mind muting just because I think there are some of your bandwidths. It just gives us a lot of feedback. Thank you.
Yeah, so we have offered the readiness program at New Hope for the past, I don't know, it's like four or five years now. And it has grown exponentially since we started. The focus of that program was to really jumpstart and front-load our students for the first nine weeks of the next grade. And so we started with like 20 kindergartners, I think it was, that first year that we started that program. And it's a partnership with the Family Success Alliance. We're still kind of in conversations about what we'll be able to offer this summer with that. But I definitely think that the lessons we've learned and the successes we've had through the past few years with Family Success Alliance and the readiness camps that we've offered can be applied to kind of various activities that we can implement across the district in terms of front-loading content, front-loading vocabulary, front-loading some of those hinge skills that we know that students are going to face in the next grade.
We're ready for you, Dr. Gammon. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much. So just to close out this evening, and you've heard this this evening from our principals and really from the lived experience of our teachers, that we are facing complex challenges that really are just so very unpredictable. And we've all, you as our school board, our district team, just our entire organization has lived through this with our community for a year now. And that we recognize that solutions to these types of challenges are going to require people to learn things in new ways. One thing that I, a powerful takeaway that I know that I've been a part of just in my short time in Orange County Schools is the work that we've done with Dr. Keeling through our ongoing equity trainings, where we've really participated in these sessions where we've learned that the biggest challenges that we're currently facing must be treated as adaptive challenges. And oftentimes in leadership, we want to treat things as technical problems and try to apply these technical solutions. But because we have these really complex and unpredictable challenges, we have to be able to appreciate the difference in those two and learn how to really think differently. I think that Ms. Parks just noted that in her presentation, just the need to think differently in how we're providing solutions. So just a couple of things that we're doing moving forward is really thinking through not only this adaptive lens, but also this technical lens. When we look at this ISO framework that you see here on this final slide, it's a part of the problem-solving process within the MTSS system that Ms. Cremmons noted earlier. We did introduce this to the board last spring, actually in March prior to COVID last year. And that, you know, we really believe this is even more relevant today because we do need a framework that we can funnel a lot of this information through that we're getting on a daily basis that's evolving to really help us make these really creative decisions that Dr. Dawson just noted just a minute ago. So I do believe just us always taking that step back to pause and say, like, how is our curriculum being taught? What curriculum are we teaching? And what is the environment? Because as we can see over the last eight, nine, 10 months, that environment has drastically changed and will continue to change. And so us being able to be very creative and to think outside of the box is going to be just paramount as we move forward. And I think doing that with, under this kind of umbrella of just grace and just extending that to each other as we've done. I believe our high school principals tonight did such an eloquent job of really humanizing what we're facing on a daily basis and really putting that out there. And I'm very appreciative of that. So I do know that moving forward, as we work through these different kind of next step options that Dr. Dawson noted, we definitely want to work through a structure, but also be as creative in any input, feedback, advice that we can gather from the larger community as well as our stakeholders within the district. We're certainly open to that so that we can do what's best for our students. So thank you all so much.
Questions or comments from board members? Ms. Smiley?
I'm just really glad that we had a chance to go deep on student achievement, where things are tonight and hope that we can, I mean, this is something that's going to be really, really important and for a long time. So it's clearly where we need to invest a lot of our attention and efforts and money. And, and so I hope that this becomes sort of an ongoing conversation where we're able to like continually hear about, you know, how it's going and how we're adapting and meeting the needs of individual kids.
Any closing thoughts?
I have, Madam Chair. I wanted to, I wanted, this is Brenda, I closed, I turned my camera off because of the buffering. But I wanted to thank the staff for their Friday night here and giving us so much useful information. And I want to say, I appreciate how they're actively building these deeper relationships with our students to start closing these achievement gaps in the classroom. And I appreciate that. And all of the resources and the attention that you all are paying to our students. And thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Ms. Howler?
I just want to add my thanks. I feel like this is the meeting that we've been waiting to have for some time. And it's really impressive to see this come together on the road. So I can't thank Dr. Felder and the district staff and the schools. So this is really challenging, but really exciting. So thank you so much.
Dr. Felder, do you have anything else before we close up this evening?
Thank you so much, Chair McKenzie. I just want to take this opportunity to thank the board for this special call meeting. I agree, this topic was long overdue. And I thank you for the opportunity to share tonight, present tonight. And for all your questions and comments and thoughts and ideas, it just speaks to the fact that, you know, it truly takes a village. It does. And I'm most grateful to all of you. I also want to thank all of the staff, our principals, Ms. Parks and our central office leaders who participated in this meeting by presenting. I know many were listening in, teachers were listening in, family members, some students as well, on a Friday night. And so I cannot thank you all enough. I greatly appreciate each and every one of you and all, and I mean all you do every day to take care of and improve outcomes for our most valuable resource, and that's our 7,000 deserving children who are entrusted to our care. You are all the best and I am most honored to work with each of you. Have a great night and weekend.
Chair, I'm going to give.
I can't really follow that, so I will just echo Dr. Felder. Thank you, everyone, so much. And Ms. Stevens, is that a motion to adjourn?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I have a motion for Ms. Stevens and a second for Mr. Atherton, Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Howler?
Yes.
I vote yes, Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Have a great night, everyone. We'll see you soon.
Good night.